All right, so we did the approval of the agenda. The motion passed with the board members who were in the room for the approval of the agenda. So we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is public participation. So we want to make sure that our technology is working for that. So we do have some folks in the room with us tonight. We have folks joining us virtually. Just a reminder, if you are going to participate in public participation, we ask that you state your name and your address at the beginning of your comments, just so that those can be in the record. That goes for folks speaking here in the room or adding comments virtually. And if there are comments that the board can easily or quickly address during public participation, we will. Otherwise, we'll note them and discuss those comments on later agenda items. So if there's anything that folks would like to add into the chat, feel free to type that in or here in the room. Just give it a minute, see if anything comes in. Okay, I don't see anything coming in for public participation. So we'll go ahead and close public participation and move on to the agenda. Our first agenda item tonight is our recognition, which we've been doing at board meetings this last year. This is a big one tonight. So tonight, we are recognizing our professional staff. So that is a huge group of people, but a group of people that we wouldn't be able to do any of what happens here without. And so I think it's 23 people, is that what you?
It's 23.
23 people. So our teachers, our UA teachers, our BCBA, our school counselor, our school social worker, all kinds of folks to thank tonight. So I will turn that over to Sydney and Kristen.
Well, we really can't say enough about our teachers and our professional staff. I was trying to think of different ways that we could acknowledge everything that you do every day. And it's just like there's no time at the board meeting to do all of that. But I know that what started to go through my mind were actually the teachers that were the most important to me when I was in elementary school and then the people that I've worked with over the years. So the one thing that I can tell you is that the effect that a teacher has on an individual person lasts for a lifetime. It just absolutely never, ever goes away. We do have some gifts for you. So for those of you who are at home, we do have some gifts that you'll find in your mailboxes throughout the week. So thank you very, very much. Although Mrs. Buckman is here, so she actually gets hers tonight. And Kristen, what did you want to say about our teachers? And well, it's our teachers and our specialists, UA, everything.
So you did a great job. You like just speak. I wrote down.
Okay.
So I can't even begin to express my gratitude and awe for everything you've done and do each and every day for our school and for our students. I'd like to share a quote by Rita Pearson. And if you don't know Rita Pearson, look her up on YouTube. She's great. She said, "Every child deserves a champion, an adult who will never give up on them, who understands the power of connection and insists that they become the best that they can possibly be." Each and every teacher at GBS is that champion for our kids. Thank you.
And I don't know if any of our board members want to say anything about.
About teachers.
I don't know if I can get word out without crying, but certainly as a current parent of a fifth grader, I'm just like, it's hard to even put into words the gratitude I have for each and every one of the people who work inside this building. As we've gone through the pandemic especially and seen what our other kids in other places experience, like that we've come on stronger on the backside of this. Not that we're done, but through hopefully the worst of it, it just speaks to the strength and the power and the passion that people have here. It's extraordinary and super special. So thank you.
We're getting to that time of year where like you find out who your teacher is going to be for next year. And so I have a fourth grader, and we were going back through previous years that he's done this. And he was like, "I've gotten the teacher I wanted every year, but I think I would have been fine with the other teacher all of those years too." Like he was like going through each year of like, but did I want that teacher or did I want this teacher? And then, and I was like, well, who do you want next year? And he was like, yeah, it was just this like, yeah. Like, and he's like, but I'll get to have both of them in fifth grade. And so there is this like, and so just thinking about that, I think, shows that there's like hearing it from a kid who was like, yeah, no, every year, every year is great. So thank you to all of our professional staff. Yes, you're the designated representative that we get to hand something to. And we, yes, absolutely. We also want to recognize tonight that we do have two folks who are in part of our administrative and our SAU staff who are leading us. And so we want to recognize Karen and Madeline tonight. I just almost combined your names. I just almost made you. So to Karen and Madeline, thank you both so much for what you have done for the district. We just appreciate it beyond, I think, anything that I can even begin to say. So I will let Sydney.
Well, just before we came over here, I asked Karen, I just said, "Will this possibly be the very last board meeting you ever attend?" She said, "Yep." But even though the Grantham Board meetings are wonderful, and she's like, she still likes a good book. I feel incredibly privileged to have worked with both Karen Lassard and with Madeline Crudo Burke. And I have learned so much from both of you. I think a lot of us model a lot of what we do after both of you. And it's just been great to have you here and for everything that you've done for Grantham and for the kids and the community. And even though we are very sad to see you go, we are somewhere deep inside, even though we don't show it very happy for you.
Yes, thank you.
You deserve it.
Thanks.
And Kristen, I don't know if you want to add anything.
So just, I feel so fortunate that Madeline and Karen are part of my first experience in administration, and I've learned so much. So I just want to thank you, and you'll be missed. Thank you.
And since Madeline is not here, you actually get to choose. Okay, Madeline, you're free to speak if you like. And Karen, Karen, since she's here, gets first pick of the gift.
Do you want right or left?
Left.
Yeah, while Karen's picking out my gift, I just want to say that it has been an honor and a privilege to.
We can hold Madeline's up so she can see it.
Beautiful. Thank you. My favorite color.
Thanks.
All right, and our next agenda item, we're going to continue the honoring and celebrating. We are honoring, at this board meeting, we like to take an opportunity to honor advancement for our staff. And so tonight, we are honoring Kathy Buckley and for receiving her reading specialist certification. So congratulations. And we have a card and another flap. There's lots of flowers.
I can show everybody.
I don't know if this one will make it to Kathy, because a lot of people have already been admiring this one.
Well, now she's seen it.
Yeah, there's evidence.
Yep. So thank you, Kathy. I think Kathy is always should.
Is on.
She can probably find that in my office.
Okay. All right, and our next agenda item is to hear from our student school board liaison. And I think we have Ellen with us tonight.
We do.
We'll just have Ellen join us and.
And Seth is. This is a class trip day or? It's a class trip day, but he's also, he's finished. He's graduating this week, so. You can see him tomorrow at the walk. Hi, Ellen.
Hi.
All right, Ellen, do you have any updates or things that you would like to bring up to the board tonight for the end of the year as you head into summer?
Yeah, I've got like a week left, which is crazy. And this is actually probably my first proper final. I've never had a real final before, and I have a rising senior, which is so funny. We have a senior trip going on today, which is where Seth is. And graduation tomorrow. I've still been setting up the tent. It's so pretty. In general, things have been going good. I think after prom, there was a big spike in COVID cases in our school, which wasn't great. I got COVID as well. But I think things started to mellow down a bit. I don't know if you heard about this, but the science Olympiad team had a really successful year. We won the state championships, which is great. We made it to nationals. And we're thinking of starting a winter program next year with middle schools, which is cool. Yeah. And the year, which is cool.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Any questions from the board? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for giving the update. Good luck with the very end of your year. And I hope things go well this summer and things, it feels a little bit more like a normal summer for people.
Thanks, Ellen. Good luck.
Have a good summer, Ellen.
Enjoy the summer.
Thank you.
All right, so our next agenda item is our policy work, which usually happens at the end, but we are very excited about this one. So we moved it up in the agenda. So our policy tonight that we'll be reviewing is the first reading of policy IKB, which is the homework policy. And so there is material on this in the board packet. But I know Mrs. Buckman is also here to talk to us about that. Anything else to introduce that?
Mrs. Buckman brought this to my attention actually a few years ago, that this was something that we wanted to look at at GBS. And she, like with most things, really took the responsibility of taking the lead on this and working with teachers and collecting information from parents in the community to present you with the first draft that you see today. So I'll let her take it from there.
Okay, so I thought I'd start by just talking briefly about our process. And so this year, we met in February as a group of interested staff to talk about some articles that we had read and gathering some background. Unfortunately, a lot of the articles were published before the COVID era. And we really had a lot to say about what we were noticing in terms of trends with students' performance, behavior and attitudes related to schoolwork. So we spent the beginning, the first meeting or so, talking about those trends that we saw and decided to develop a personal philosophy as a staff about homework. Following the philosophy development, we sent a, developed a survey for parents and sent that survey out, got some feedback, and took a look at that feedback that we received. We developed a common understanding for our expectations around homework and developed a learning progression specifically related to homework. We looked at types of skills that we see right now that need some extra time and attention. Mostly, we're feeling mostly because of the effects of our time out of school during COVID. And we came to an agreement about what we thought would be the best course forward. And from that, we developed this draft of a homework policy that you see today and sent it to Kristen and Sydney for feedback. And with a little revision, that's the document that you have in your packet today.
Thank you. Questions from the board on this policy?
I was just so happy and pleased to see this. It's, you know, as a teacher myself, I looked at this and thought, this really spells out the opportunity to develop responsibility for the kids at home and the expectation with parents and teachers and the students. And I just, I was just so pleased to read this. And I especially appreciated the statement that said that, oh, it's designed to, homework is designed to provide students with practice, but will not count toward a final grade in any academic content area. Because for some kids, we just, we just know that their lives aren't as predictable from day to day. But yet, it sets the importance of practicing these skills at home with the accommodation for things that come up in all of our families. So I was very, very happy to see this.
I too appreciated how well it was laid out, the responsibilities. And yeah, I was, you know, I really appreciate the work that went into that. I appreciate that very much.
What was the response like for the survey? Like just in terms of like numbers of responses, but also just kind of generally the theme of the responses?
I think there were 88 responses. And we provided an opportunity for parents to express any kind of concerns they might have about us reinstating a homework policy, because we haven't had homework since COVID. The concerns were more time away from family, like that it's an added responsibility for families to ensure that the homework gets done. And our take on that, or our reflection was that we need to be really careful to make sure that the homework we assign is something that students can do independently and shouldn't really require a lot of supervision from families. There were a number of parents who really support homework as a communication tool. They have a better idea of what their kids are responsible for and what they need to know and be able to do just through that weekly or daily exchange of work from one to school.
I will say, having math come home is very helpful because math is different now. And like relearning math is very helpful to like, it helps me feel like I'm giving accurate information because the way that math is taught and its approach is so different from how I learned it. I really wish I had learned it the way that kids learn it now. It makes much more sense for my brain. But I think just like that little bit of math that we have seen come home, just an unfinished work, has been so helpful just for like my own check-in of like, show me how to do, how do you learn how to do? Like, I've never seen this way of learning how to multiply things before. And so I think just for like that one area has really, I will admit, I was somebody who was like, kids don't need homework. And then I was like, oh, I, as a parent, need the homework because I need to see, and I have a friend who is a math teacher at a higher level, and she has nights where she invites parents to come in and learn how they do math now, just in that one area. And I think that that, I could see that being true in other areas as well, that there's like content that it's approached differently now than it was when we were learning. And so to be able to not only understand how our kids are learning, but also like not be in conflict with how we are approaching things is, I think, really beneficial.
Were there any concerns expressed about extracurricular activities? And I'm looking more at sort of like the third grade and up, where we're talking, you know, 40 minutes to 50 minutes a night, baseball practices, soccer practices, games, all that fun stuff. Any real concern with that?
We did have a conversation about that a couple of times. More than we both tried to focus on time management. If we introduce the homework in class before the end of the day and we're certain that students know how to approach that piece of practice work, we're confident that they will be able then to manage their time so that they can accomplish the task of completing the homework and still participating in their own activities.
And since this, I guess, isn't going to really count toward final grades and stuff, any talk about what happens if students just don't do their homework?
We did discuss that. And we have a practice of, in the past, I'll say, we have had a practice of meeting with kids who can't, whose schedules maybe are a little bit more prohibitive in terms of finishing their homework. Or included in that group as well are kids who are just still struggling, even with the homework practice provided. They still need a little bit more in order to get there with their understanding. So typically, there's a piece built into the school day where kids will meet with a teacher as a group that fall into that category.
My daily basis.
The sixth grade, for example, has done an end-of-the-day study hall. Sometimes we have a, we don't call it study hall in grade four. I can speak to grade four, but we do have study groups.
Would this be, and you may not have the answer to this. It might be more of a Kristen question. Would this be guidelines for if teachers wanted to assign homework? Or would this be more of like the expectation that teachers are assigning this amount of homework?
I can answer that.
Okay.
Teachers would plan to assign this amount of homework.
Okay.
We also developed a much more specific set of guidelines for teachers on the development of the homework and decided that really didn't belong in the policy, but belongs in the staff handbook. And that is something that we plan to work on should the homework policy be adopted.
Yeah, my, because my question, my question was if it was more of like an optional framework, if a student had a teacher several years in a row who didn't assign any homework, and then in fifth grade, they had 45 minutes of daily homework, that could be. Yeah.
We also discussed that. And we felt it was really important to follow this progression that we had developed.
Yep.
So that kids do understand there's an expectation for them to follow up on their learning throughout the day. And there is some research to support that that little gap of time between when they learn it and when they practice is very beneficial. So our expectation is the progression will begin in their very early years at Grantham and continue through.
I wonder if we should think about, I don't know when this happens, back to school night or something, but I'm just thinking about supporting parents. Like, I'm sitting here with mixed feelings. I was probably in the no homework camp even before COVID. But I also have an older child, older than my fifth grader, and know the benefit of the habits and all of those things. I also have, my second born child does not enjoy homework at all, especially since we've had the pandemic. And I'm just thinking of like, I'm a teacher and my husband is a therapist, and we struggle to motivate him. And we have a relationship with his teacher where I've said, this is going to be something between you and your teacher. Because if you're not going to work with me, then you have to take responsibility. But I'm just thinking about how we might help parents, help support them as they move into like a pretty, you know, into a much more consistent approach from the school and empowering them slash supporting them. And probably because I'm an educator, you know, I said to Mrs. Beck, though, he's going to have to take responsibility with you. And that's working slowly. But, you know, if I wasn't an educator, I probably would just fight with Barrett. I'm admitting it out loud on camera. So anyway, I'm just thinking about ways we can support parents as we like move into this kind of approach. Because I think parents will need it. I would, I will maybe need it.
Yeah. I would think my greatest concern really lies with the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, the daily amount. I don't know if there, if there was any talk about, you know, dropping that, you know, two, three, four days, you know, two or three days a week, I guess. I do get concerned with, you know, the extracurricular activities. And I, you know, I'd like to think that from a pandemic perspective, you know, we've learned a little bit that there's a lot of stuff outside of school that, you know, kids can learn and develop with, especially with, you know, sports or other activities that they're doing. I think that's the piece I'm most concerned about is just the, yeah, the 45 minutes every single day on top of, you know, what other kids are doing, especially implementing this for essentially the first time at least after not having any homework for a couple of years. I could see next year being a little bit of a shock to people.
Is it okay if I? So the time does include reading time, right?
It does, and that's really important because we know kids aren't going to be better readers if they don't read.
Right.
And in the past, our policy reflected a time component for all core areas except reading. And reading was on top of that. And this policy includes reading in the minutes that are represented. The other thing is homework, talking about daily versus weekly. We did allow for more flexibility in the earlier grades by collecting, by deciding we would collect homework weekly so that those folks that are newer to time management had a little bit more wiggle room that way. So if it was easier for their family to do a math fact sheet on a Sunday afternoon or a Thursday afternoon, that would be perfectly acceptable because their homework would be collected weekly, for home and a weekly packet. For grades four through six, we felt that because the homework assignments that we anticipate giving are short homework assignments. For example, one of those math home links has six to nine problems on it typically. And that is something that we plan to utilize. That it really wouldn't take so long to do it as it would be developing that opportunity to manage your time and develop some routines. And in grades four through six, that daily homework is Monday through Thursday.
I would also just want to add in that we do want to make sure that the students are prepared for middle school. So, you know, there was a lot of consideration of not just homework in middle school, but also all of the extracurriculars that are in middle school and that kind of time management too. So this certainly isn't at the level of middle school, but it's good preparation for that, good practice.
And Levitton's still giving out homework, middle school?
Oh, yeah.
We did get feedback from Levitton Middle.
Yeah.
Any other questions or discussions?
I have to admit that I was surprised that after reading through carefully, and then I did come across the part that, you know, this will not count towards, toward a grade, a final grade. So it doesn't really play into their grades?
No, it, the goal is for students to have more solid conceptual knowledge and basic fact knowledge.
So in that way, it does, of course.
Right. Well, I think a key point, key word is academic content area. So we still have our HAWCs, which are work habits and citizenship. And completion of homework would definitely be included in that.
Good point, good point. Thank you.
The progressive throughout the year piece, is that referring to like building up to 45 minutes? Okay. So thinking about like one of the things that Ed brought up. So like at the beginning of the year, it may be a much, a shorter amount and then building to that point, so it wouldn't ever get to be more than 45 minutes?
Right. So just like in class, we build reading stamina starting from the first day. And when you first begin reading stamina, you start with five minutes, right? The little kids start with less than five minutes. And then over a period of time, they build up to the 20 to 30 minutes of reading time that we would expect certainly with the older kids. So that's why it says over a period of time.
So is it, is it safe to assume that we're talking 20 to 30 minutes of reading is built into that 45-minute number?
Yes, it is.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the first reading of policy IKB.
So move second.
I have a motion from Denise and a second from Leslie. And so we'll do a roll call for this. All those, if you're in favor, please say aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Denise?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Brittany, aye. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much for working on this and for coming in tonight.
Yes.
And thank you to the rest of the committee that helped you.
Now go home and rest.
Now go home and rest.
Okay, our next agenda item is the website selection. So we have information in the board packet. On the two selections that are being brought forward for websites. So hopefully everyone can have a chance to look at those. And we also have Mr. Burton here with us.
Sure. Um, so Sydney, should I share or should I just talk? I can talk to the notes that you have or I can show a few things if you would like. I'll just start while Sydney's doing that, just to talk a little bit about the process we followed in order to come up with these two recommendations. So when we started on the search for a website tool, we cast our net pretty wide and looked at a lot of the other school districts that are here in, in the state. And we found that virtually none of them use the same tool. So they're all using a different vendor for this, it seems like. And so what we did was collected the nine or so tools that we thought were. Going to maybe do the job for us. And, uh. Came up with a rubric that was going to look at each one of those things and evaluate them based on what we thought our criteria was. And so some of the things we were looking at was. How well do they let you do searches? How, how does it fulfill the idea that it is our front lobby to the school? And we want to put our best foot forward for GBS to the world and to our, our viewers. The other big question for us was ADA compliance. So this has become a very big issue with a lot of websites these days where. They, uh, they want to make sure that you're able to, to have people with disabilities be able to use your website and get and see what they needed to do. So there was a whole host of criteria we used around that to come up with this selection. We had a committee that went and called vendors. We talked to various school districts about how it worked for them. And really we narrowed it down to, to these two.
My computer is definitely slow.
All right, I'll, I can just talk.
Okay.
It's fine.
You're doing great.
Okay, so really there's kind of three main types of, of these web tools that are out there. There's what they call content management systems. Which are really almost like a newspaper where you write your story and you submit it and it just sort of magically appears on the website. There's the more traditional site editor, which is what we've been using, you know, Google Sites. Some people use just a whole bunch where you're in there with the HTML, moving stuff around and doing a lot of technical work. And the last sort of style were these things called feeds where it's like a content management system, but it's not just going to the website. It's going off to Facebook and other social media and makes content for you to do things like sticking into your newsletter. Newsletter. So you're able to take that content you generate and it feeds out to all these various places. That your people are getting their information from. And we found that a lot of people actually are getting information from their phones now. As opposed to going to a traditional website. So all these things were factors that we, we figured in into the sites that we looked at. So, um, the two that we came down with were one called. Educational Networks or EDUNET and another one called EDLEO. And they're both excellent tools. I think we'd be happy with either one of these. Should we build one way or the other? We found that they have. Better strengths for, for some over the other. For educational networks, the, uh. Their strength is that they have a very strong visual appeal to the sites that they build. They have an art department that will go and do custom artwork for your website. Uh, some of the sites are really quite impressive when you look at them. They've even done things where they have a graphic theme where they would. Take the artwork that they've done on the website and around the school, they had some of the same images. So there's this. Theme like superhero all the way through for a particular school. So that was a really good, strong piece for educational networks. For EDLEO, their strength was more on the backend where. We're able to take the tool and work it into our day to day work process. So that as people are, are going about their business and, uh, you know, Kristen's writing her weekly newsletter and has a story there. They can take that story and very easily with a couple of clicks. Put it into the newsletter, put it onto social media, put it onto the website and it all just kind of goes through from one console. So that was kind of the strengths of one over the other. Educational Networks has a lot of that idea behind it, but it's a little bit less polished about that. Things like whenever you want to upload an image or a photo, you have to get it off of your computer from the hard drive. As opposed to clicking off to the Google Drive where somebody shared a file with you, which is a strength of EDLEO. So, uh, really those are kind of the pros and cons of the two tools that we had. I think I summarized that in the sheet that you have there. Cost is a bit, they're, they're sort of close, but a little bit different. Both of the tools have. Some upfront fees associated with building your site. They offer varying levels of how much work they want to help you build your site with, where you can either just take something that's right off the shelf. Or they can work with you to do something a little more custom, but there's some more expense associated with that. I think the guys with educational networks would send a photographer out and do like drone video shoots and all this other stuff. So it's like they have a big marketing staff and art staff with them. But I think the pros and cons between the two can, can be balanced out. And I think that even with the strong backend, if you put the effort in upfront, I think EDLEO can have. Just as impressive a look upfront if you, if you work hard at it at the beginning. So that's kind of the, the pros and cons of the two tools. As I said, it was very difficult for us to, to say, yes, this is the one, which is why you have two to look at here. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about particular tools or the, the things we looked at. What, uh, what the strengths or, or cons are for either of these tools.
And they are up there if you want me to go to any part.
Sure. I think maybe just real quick, if you could go to maybe a couple of sample sites would be good, just so they kind of see what they look like. At the very top of the page.
Well, this is what's in the board.
Can you follow, can you follow, like if you go, so for example, Lebanon actually uses educational networks. Is that clickable or no?
Not right now.
No, okay. All right. Never mind. You guys can, can look at those. But I would say that from the standpoint of ADA compliance, both of these sites do an excellent job. For example, Texas School for the Deaf uses EDLEO. I think the guys at EDUNET said that they have something like two hundred schools in New York City that use their tool that get audited once a quarter. So I'm not really worried about the, the ADA compliance piece. That's kind of. Either way. But I do think from a day to day workflow perspective, I think EDLEO has the upper hand.
Yeah. And to me, this, thank you for this really good summary, having a fair amount of experience with things like this in both public and private schools. I feel like we're, the EDUNET is slightly more like marketing oriented, meaning like slick. I don't mean this in a bad way, but like slick and really good looking. But from my experience, like having a backend that feels really like user friendly. Because what we're really, for us, our purposes in GBS, it's very informational. We're not trying to get people to come to our school. I mean, we do want them to. But it's more about like communication tools and information sharing, all of that. And so to have that ease to me is worth maybe like, like you said, they're pretty close in price, like slightly more expensive maybe. And I think you're right. Like if you put the effort into EDLEO, you probably would make it as awesome looking as EDUNET. So that's sort of my takeaway. I think it's really, really important to be user friendly and a really good interface on the backend.
There are two other pages on the slides actually that we could show real quick. Page two, she'd gone to that first. So this is EDUNET. Basically, the way it looks is. There's a button you press to assign it to the actual webpage and you can edit things and move it around. They do have a backend to it also. But if you scroll down to the next page. This kind of shows you what the interface is for EDLEO.
Yeah.
So when Kristen or Mike or whoever's using this sits or a teacher. Sits down to go put in a story, they would click on the news and alerts button. It comes up with, this is your headline, this is your subhead, attach your photo and they hit send. And where do you want it to go? I want it to go to Facebook, in my newsletter and my, and they go boom and off it goes. So it's, it's a lot easier from that perspective on a day to day basis, I think.
Do, um, both of them work with other platforms that we're using? So other like, what's the, is there any kind of concerns about like integration with any of the like? Other, all of the other things that we have now between like Alma and.
Paw Patrol.
Which I've decided is Paw Patrol.
I call it that all the time.
Every time it comes up, I'm like, perfect Paw Patrol.
They both connect to Google Calendar, so they'd be able to take our calendar stuff and put it into that. I will say that EDLEO does a way better job with Google than, than EDUNET. EDUNET, you literally have to have all the files on your local machine. And upload them. It's sort of the old paradigm. Whereas in EDLEO, you can go click, it's in your drive, you click file and it's up. And you know, I, I really think the usability from a, from the end user's perspective is probably a lot better with EDLEO.
It's funny, Randy in, in multiple meetings has made the comment about the difference in the visual. On EDLEO and EDUNET. And, um. He's a marketing guy. So he sees those differences as the person like, I just go to see what I need to find. I thought they were both beautiful.
Yeah.
Randy, why is, uh, well, just when you were talking about cons and disadvantages and it says EDLEO expensive, first year cost. Seven thousand eight hundred and sixty. Why is it so much more for the first year?
Because they have the building piece that then goes with it. Now. You, they have sort of three options for how you can build your site. You can have them come in and custom build something for you at about, a cost of about three thousand dollars. Or you can go pick something that's a little bit less customized, but it's just yours and yours alone. And they will work with you to, to edit it a little bit. And then there's sort of the off the shelf, someone else might have that design somewhere. And that one is basically no cost. So it's like fifteen hundred bucks for the middle belt. And like three thousand for the super help you get your site just right for you. And not to say that that's a disadvantage because once you've built it once, it's yours. And you know, we talked to them about, well, what if we're tired of it after a year? They says, well, okay, a year, you're probably not going to feel that way. But after maybe five years, they want your site to look good too. They're probably not going to charge you to update it and fix it because they were representing them too.
Thank you.
So really I think both of them have this upfront due to work cost that, you know, if you want to build a good looking site. I think that's a worthwhile expense if you have the money to spend on it. And that will set the stage very well for the long term and then it's just an ongoing expense.
Any other questions or comments? From the board?
Do. I saw that one of them has a. That was an app. Associated with it. Do both of them have?
So EDUNET, I think charges extra to have a specific app that they build for you.
Yep.
I think that EDLEO has what they call a web enabled site. And all of that again has been optimized already for ADA. So whether you're looking at it on a mobile device or on a computer. It doesn't really matter from that perspective. So these days, almost every website has been optimized that way. In fact, our current website, if you're using Google Sites. Has three buttons that you can press before you publish. And one of them is this what it looks like on a phone, this what it looks like on an iPad, this what it looks like on your desktop. So I think really the only benefit of an app might be if you were going to use it for alerts. For people and you wanted to do push notifications or something like that. And I'm not even certain we're able to do that with EDUNET.
Discussion for the board of initial thoughts on which. You're leaning towards or other questions that would help us?
I'm always one that has to defer to somebody else's. Technology. I mean, if you wanted to analyze a classical piece of music, I'm there. Um, my concern as an educator, if I were still working, I would want to know, you know, of the two, which one would be more. Beneficial and, and user friendly.
Right.
And, and working with the existing things that we're already working with. And it just sounds like. From what I've read that with all the Google things that we've been doing in the schools that the EDLEO seems to be more. I guess more accessible?
I, I would agree with that. I think. The benefit of going towards a tool like this as opposed to keeping something that we already have other than ADA compliance. Is that it has the opportunity for our workflow to improve. To make it part of our regular job so that as we're just doing our work, the web stuff just sort of happens. As opposed to the way it is now, which is here, Randy put this on the web. Hey Brenda, put this up on the website.
That's cumbersome.
Oh my gosh, we gotta get this on to Facebook. Holy cow, we gotta send a message out to the parents. Hey, can you write that up as a thing for the newsletter? So having that all be part of the tool to me is a tremendous advantage.
I know one of the places that this whole project came from was out of the strategic plan. And we talked about how we can leverage our website to help as like a community hub. For information for people. And so just thinking about like, if, if that continues to be a goal, that would increase. The amount of things that we're looking to host on a site. So to me, having. Spending a little bit more to have something that makes that easier to do and makes it more integrated and intuitive for people. To me makes a lot of sense to support that goal of the strategic plan. Especially like, I think one of the things that we've heard is like, there's so much information and it's. Coming at families in so many different ways. And if there's a platform that it feels like we can sort of like, like I said, integrate that a little bit more. And make it a little more. User friendly for the people that are doing that. I think there's a huge benefit to that. So I would definitely lean towards the EDLEO.
I agree.
I would agree with that actually, that consumers these days get their information from a lot of different sources depending upon who they are. There's people who are, you know, text people, there's social media people, there's web people. And being able to give multiple modes of access.
Yeah.
To that information so that there's lots of open doors for people to get at what they're looking for. That's their preferred method, I think has a huge advantage.
I also liked one of them, one of the sites that was, um, from that company had like little like pop up things that came up that you could like. Send away, but they were like things that people, it's, it looked like these were things that like the district actively needed parents to be doing. So like here's some, like when you come to our website, this little thing pops up to remind you to. Sign up for Paw Patrol or.
It's early dismissal tomorrow.
Update your, yeah, like those.
I did like that.
Yeah, I thought that was a, a nice, um, you know, potential feature to be able to like. Have those static things still like viewable on the site, but have these other things that are like. This is a top priority right now. Put your attention on this.
I do think that the artistic aspect of EDUNET could easily be adapted to EDLEO if you had talented people. Helping us do the initial implementation. We have some very talented people on staff, I think with some skills we could come up with.
Might there be opportunity for some students to work with this as well, like a project or?
Sure. I mean, there's always opportunities for kids to get involved in what we're doing. And I think they'd be excited to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, so it sounds like we're leaning towards the EDLEO. So, um. We would need a motion to approve the selection of EDLEO for the website redesign.
Second?
Alright, so I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise and we'll do a roll call. Um, if you're in favor, please say aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Denise?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Brittany, aye. All right. And our next agenda item is our federal grant. And our next agenda item is our federal grant, thank you, Randy.
Oh, you're welcome. I'm sorry if I'm, I just wondered because there were so many possibilities with the pricing versus with the contract, I just wondered if we were going to go for the, a longer?
Oh, interesting.
Three year con- I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's, yeah, no.
I should have mentioned that before the vote, but. Do we make a decision on that this evening or?
I think I can crunch those numbers and see.
That would be great.
What's gonna really work for us and also I think when Randy really starts telling Ed Leo that we're going to be contracting with them, that we can start looking at like that gallery versus.
Right.
Other option, so.
So I think we're looking at the highest prices right now, the highest?
Yeah, we're looking at the maximum.
I think so.
Right, so we could potentially pare it down. We've allotted already seventy five hundred dollars for the website. So we're totally in the ballpark for the maximum that it could be. So, you know, wherever I can cut money, I usually do because then I like to use money for other things also.
I don't question that, thank you.
No, that's okay. However, if the board wants to make those decisions or decide on a number of year terms, you can also do that tonight if you want.
I would, I would just, I trust Randy to keep us in the loop and, you know, make your advisements to us. I don't know that I necessarily feel like we have to decide for the district. Like I'm comfortable with Randy just keeping us in the loop. And if you get to a decision point where you feel like you need board input amongst Kristen, Randy, Sydney, that's fine with me, but.
We're, we're not in an SB two district, which would be the only difference with multi-year contracts, so we don't really have to worry about that.
I think my only concern would be if we aided it after a year.
Yeah.
Which I really don't think is going to be the case. But, you know, if, if this is something we're going to put the work into upfront, I expect we're probably going to have it for a while.
Yeah.
But, you know, again, that can be an ongoing discussion.
Yeah, and we get a discount if we make a commitment, which I'm comfortable with for sure.
Right, we can have conversations with them about all of that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, our next agenda item is the federal grant assurances. So this is the FY twenty twenty-three for federal grant assurances.
Thank you Karen.
Thank you Karen.
Thank you.
And the information for that is in the board packet.
Okay, just a brief recap, that this is something that you unfortunately have to do every year so that we are able to process federal grants for the year.
Welcome to the initiation Nancy.
Basically just says that, basically, and thank you Randy.
Thanks Randy.
Basically, it just says that, oh, and before actually you go, I want to thank everybody who was on our website team. So Fran Scheller, Mike Beechy, Ian Pollard, Kristen, Brenda, me, Randy, and am I forgetting anybody? I think that's it.
That was it.
Awesome, thank you.
We have a group looking at everything.
Awesome, so exciting.
Yeah, so this is the annual, yes, we will make sure that we are complying with every federal grant law that exists. And the board chair will sign every page of it.
Just my weird initials, they got weirder as I went.
On the first page, Sydney, there was a, this third paragraph saying. Uh, yes, saying this document contains a few minor differences from the fiscal twenty twenty-two document. You were encouraged to do a side by side comparison. Off the top of your head, is it something that you're aware of, something that's so different? Cause like you said, we have to do this every year.
We have to do this every year and basically we, we have really very strict guidance for following federal grants, what's accepted, what's not accepted and how we process them, so.
And if you don't.
We can't go outside the lines, there's no option to.
Yep, so you can complain about it, but you still have to sign it.
I mean, this document came into existence because the commissioner and the state board felt that school boards needed to have skin in the game when accepting federal grant money. That was the, that was the quote.
Just leave it right there.
Yeah.
So you consider yourselves having skin in the game.
Always.
You know, we also have our federal grants audited, you know, I don't, I don't know what else we could do.
Yeah. Any other questions or discussions for the federal grant assurances? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the FY twenty twenty-three federal grant assurances.
So moved.
Second, I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise, we'll do a roll call. If you're in favor, please say aye, if you're opposed, say nay. Denise?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Brittany, aye. Alright, our next agenda item is accepting the resignation of Taylor Balla. And there is a letter, a beautiful letter in our.
We have one in between.
Oh, what did I miss? Oh, no, you're right, I missed one.
We have to accept.
I don't have to do my sad thing yet, okay. Um, our next agenda item is to accept the unanticipated revenue. So the, um, there is a memo in our board packet about this. This is unanticipated revenue regarding difficult to procure and, you know, healthy foods. So this is unanticipated food service revenue for nine thousand seven hundred fifty-six dollars and nine cents.
Good.
And I wrote about this in my last board, um, letter, so hence the smoothies and some, some other things that Mrs. Bailey has already started to do, some, some fresh fruit and vegetables going out. So we're trying to leverage this to, you know, get, cause supply chain has definitely been an issue.
So in the last newsletter, I showed pictures, or maybe it was the one before, of the fresh fruits and vegetables on the tray. And I actually had parents reach out to, more than one parent, reach out to me and say, two of their kids always buy school lunch and they are so excited to have fresh fruits and vegetables. And another child never buys school lunch, but says he wants to now because their fresh fruits come.
Yay.
So that's all super cool stuff.
Yeah.
And just for clarification, this would be for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year?
No, it's for now.
Oh, it's.
So we have to spend quickly.
Oh, wow, that's a lot.
And it will help subsidize anything that we've bought that has been more expensive, that we couldn't procure through the usual means.
Okay, so it's for the rest of the school year? Fresh pile every day.
We'll mention that.
Nancy, I feel like you might not know this necessarily, that like our, um, school lunch budget is like, I would describe it as very elastic. Like you'll have times when you'll sit here and we'll be at a pretty significant deficit. And we anticipate that every year, so it's a very, it's like a pretty fluid line item, really.
I see, I did realize that, no.
Yeah, so it's just good context for you to know, like we technically on paper like lose money on it, but we usually find ways to.
So this is very, very helpful, it's very helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Hi, we need a motion to accept the unanticipated food services revenue.
So moved. Second.
Alright, so I have a motion from Denise and a second from Leslie. So we'll do a roll call, if you're in favor, please say aye, if you're opposed, say nay. Denise?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Brittany, aye. Alright, now, we can talk about the lovely letter from Taylor Balla, our art teacher. And so this is something that the board does with heavy hearts to accept resignations. But we're happy for Ms. Balla to be moving on to a, I mean, I'm a little jealous of the school that she is moving on to, to be their art teacher. So we need a motion to accept with regret and deep gratitude the resignation of Taylor Balla.
So moved.
Second, I have a motion from Nancy and a second from Leslie, we'll do a roll call. Denise?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Brittany, aye. Alright. She's not going far though.
She's not, and she gave, she said goodbye and she gave me these earrings.
Oh, I've been admiring them.
She left them on my desk. I told her I'd made sure I wore them tonight.
Alright, so our next agenda item is a nomination. And so we have the nomination of Emily Stafford for a teaching position. Anything else to add for that one?
Do you want to say a quick, very quick description of our new kindergarten teacher?
Sure, she has been a kindergarten teacher in Newport and she came and she did a great job in her interview. She came and taught a model lesson, which was fabulous. We're really excited to have her.
Excellent, alright, so we need a motion to accept the nomination of Emily Stafford for the position of teacher.
So moved. Second.
So I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise and we'll do a roll call for that. So Denise?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Ed? Brittany, aye. Alright, our next agenda item is the GBS playground renovation update.
Um, I do wish I had a better update for you, but I think we all have known the reality of the trouble of finding a contractor for phase one this summer. So phase one will not happen this summer. I will send an unfortunate letter home in my newsletter to the community this weekend to let everybody know. I, I try to look at the bright side, the bright side is the financial side, which means that with a, with a bid in September for next summer, which is what our plan is right now, we should have, you know, more competition, which is going to be a stronger RFP, stronger bid process without staging and phasing the project, you know, whenever you start and stop a project, it's more expensive. So hopefully that benefits us financially and I still keep remembering that, you know, at least with the expected multiple federal rate increases, increases, at least we were able to pass the bond before those things happened. So the financial is the upside. I think the downside is for our current fifth graders who are not very happy. So I apologize about that, but nothing to be done, we received zero. We received a lot of interest, but the interest was we're absolutely interested for summer of twenty-three. Yeah, there was just really nobody who could do it, but we will be moving forward with the pavilion this summer. So that's still a go. And I don't know exact dates for that, cause we're still in, in the works with that new plan, the smaller plan, the permitting for that, but we don't see any bumps in the road for that part of the project. The reason that this became an action item is because we were, Toby Compo, our facilities director, was contacted by Emily Rinda Thorson and the town is interested in our dugouts and backstop, which we would be getting rid of in the renovation project anyway. So I would like to ask the board to just allow us to donate those to the town rec department. And however we move them, we move them.
That's awesome. So we'll have like two proper baseball fields down at the rec field, that's really helpful.
That's a win-win. Yep.
Awesome.
And we don't, I mean, Mrs. Reed didn't shed a tear when I asked if we could do it now instead of waiting till next summer. So, um, we're, we, they can go at any time.
Awesome.
Yep.
You driving the truck?
Maybe. You need a motion for that, Sydney.
Yeah, because it's actually, we're donating a piece of capital, so.
Any discussion for that donation?
Super supportive.
Alright, so we need a motion to donate the backstop, what is it, dugouts and?
Dugouts and backstop.
Dugouts and backstops to the Grantham Rec Department.
So moved. Oh, sorry Nancy. Alright, I'm gonna put a zip it.
Go ahead and say.
Second.
Perfect, alright, so we have a motion from Leslie and a second from Nancy, so we'll do a roll call. Denise?
Aye. Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Ed? Brittany, aye. Alright, our next agenda item is the end of year encumbrance, so similar topic. And there's a memo in the school board packet about this.
So in your memo, I am requesting that the board encumbers up to twelve thousand dollars of this year's funds. It's, will not affect what we estimated or the tax rate because we had savings in other areas. But with the pavilion project moving forward, we need a place for the kids to sit and eat. So, uh, there are, as I put in the memo, there are other funding sources for this, but I would, my recommendation is that it comes from this year's funds because those other funding sources can probably benefit other, other things more appropriately. But the other thing is that you've already encumbered fifty thousand dollars for the pavilion project. I'm asking for the other twelve, however, if that fifty thousand dollars winds up being less than fifty, you know, we won't need the twelve, so I'm actually just asking to encumber it as a just in case we wind up going over that fifty. There's no guarantee that we will because we still don't have actual costs on the pad for the pavilion and we still don't have actual costs on the materials from Yankee Barn. So obviously, we're going to keep those costs as low as possible. So you may encumber sixty-two thousand dollars total and who knows, the cost could be thirty or whatever. No matter what happens, whatever's left over gets returned to the taxpayers.
Right.
So this is just a little bit of a, a safety belt. This would be like tables and chairs. Yeah, picnic, so what we're looking at is industrial, more like industrial, um, metal coated picnic tables, so that's something that's really going to last forever, that's easy to clean, something we don't have to worry about with rot and insects or treating or any of those kind of things that can be out there. And there would probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of six to eight under the pavilion and then probably around four outside of the pavilion.
Nice, that's gonna be nice.
Is that, um, gonna, is that, does that provide flexible enough seating and space for like however that space might want to be used?
And I don't know if every, any, they're gonna be heavy.
Yeah.
You know, so I don't know if, if that's what you mean about flexibility, it's not going to be easy to, to pick up those tables and move them around for different types of instruction. Because they, to get sturdy tables, they are going to be kind of heavy. Not that we don't have some strong people here who couldn't move them, but, you know, we have to try and balance that durability of being outside with. So I think if somebody's using the pavilion, they might want to cater their instruction to how the tables are set up.
Do you think that, is there, I'm, I'm trying to like weigh the like cost benefit of, of use, of like space use? And I, I mean, I think, like thinking about it as like an outdoor, if, if it's going to be used for like eating and that kind of stuff primarily, then I think that makes a lot of sense, but I guess thinking about like what's the, what's the primary use goal for it? And is that gonna be the, like, provide the right, you know, flexibility or whatever for seating?
Yeah, well, I mean, at the tables, you can still have instruction, you can still have a meeting, you could still have a movie night. You know, you could still have a, a community dinner, you know, those kind of things. So I think those things can still happen with the tables, but lunch, snack.
No dance party.
No, we're not going to go for a dance party.
We can dance outside.
But, you know, for, if we did have a dance party, that would be cause to get people to move them, right?
Right?
Yeah.
Be the beginning of it.
Yeah.
Help move a table.
And we did envision those kind of things because we did, in the plans, we requested that they run electric out to the pavilion so that we'll have two outlets, one on each side, so we can hang lights or we could have a projector or, you know, we, we're taking advantage of, while they're digging, to put that in there perfectly.
Yeah, that's great.
And I suppose if you found that we needed a different kind of seating in there, those good industrial things, they could move and live outside of the pavilion.
Yes, they can.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I mean, if the board wants us to look for different tables, we can look for, we can look for different options if you think that's something, if you want something that's more flexible.
Do you see it primarily being used for like meals and like kind of more like seated instruction, that kind of thing?
I do.
I do too, meeting space, small groups, small group workspace, community gathering space, eating snack.
Kind of like we're using the tents right now.
Yeah.
Yeah. They won't blow over.
Right.
And, and there's tables and chairs in there now and those, do those pretty much kind of like stay where they are?
They do.
So that, yeah, then that makes sense.
The only one that got moved was that one got moved halfway out so that people could have the sunshine.
That's why we're planning on some, under, on some outside.
Yep.
Nice.
So we need a motion.
Yeah, oh, and I was gonna say, I, I also, I think, I mentioned to, to Sydney, we were at Vins and they have two really beautiful pavilions that they've put up in the last year or so. And the one that's their outdoor classroom has built into part of it, it has a big storage box that's like mounted on the, um, like the side of it that has like a big lid and like a hinge and stuff that. And I was saying, I was going to mention that tonight, just in terms of like, as we're looking at sort of like outfitting that space, is that, you know, something that if, if there's funds available, you know, do we want to think about like having, if there's, if you think there's going to be things that are often used out in that space, does it make sense to have something that's kind of like permanent and built out there? As like a storage.
Yeah.
System in, in that space. does it make sense to have something that's kind of like permanent and built out there as like a storage system in that space?
Yeah, I think that would definitely be good to look into. I think there's definitely some, going to be some things that we'll need regularly outside, don't you think? Like, if nothing else, like some great cleaning stuff that we can grab.
Hand sanitizer.
Yeah.
Towels that we leave out there.
Pressure washer.
Just on the note of the playground in general too, what we found is that we also have an issue that's come up in our safety meetings with joint last management committee. The biggest complaint that we always have is the parking lot, where there's always runoff from the basketball court going across that drive. And then the slip and fall is, that's, no matter what happens every winter when we ask about concerns, that's the number one concern. So while we're looking at everything, we're having Horizon's engineering survey that area, so that we can add that to the survey, and we can see if we can have some kind of a fix for that as well while we're doing everything. But resurfacing the basketball court was originally part of the playground project. What we're finding is that the back right corner where that runoff is, has eroded at least one to two feet. Yeah, it's pretty significant erosion. So that's just a heads up, that you'll probably be hearing a little bit more about that in the future. We're not really sure what the best fix is for it, but there's, we're going to have to do something about that.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the encumbrance of up to $12,000 for seating in the pavilion.
So moved.
Second. Alright, so I have a motion from Nancy and a second from Leslie, and we'll do a roll call. Denise?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Brittany? Aye. Alright, our next agenda item is the New Hampshire School Board Association resolutions. So this is the time of year when school boards can submit resolutions to the School Board Association for consideration at the delegate assembly. I think July, at some point in July is the deadline for these. This is not something that we are required to do by any means. There's usually just a handful of schools that submit resolutions. But if there is something that the board feels is particularly important to us to put forward, these are the points that the New Hampshire School Board Association takes like advocacy and lobbying and legislative work on our behalf. So these resolutions sort of guide the focus and the work and the positions that the School Board Association takes. So, and I think there's a couple of different ways that I have seen school boards use this process. One is to do exactly what I just said, to kind of shape the position that the School Board Association will take on things that we think are going to be, still be coming up at the legislative level. The School Board Association does not love when a school board puts something in that's already in there. So if our issues are already represented by resolutions that are currently on the board, unless there's major changes to them, I would recommend that we don't, you know, put anything else forward on those issues. The other thing that I have seen happen successfully is, for example, the scholarship that Seth got this year, that was put forward initially as a resolution, and the School Board Association said this isn't something that should rise to the level of a resolution. But if this voting body is interested in us doing that, show your support for it, and we'll go ahead and do that. And so the delegate assembly took a vote to say, yes, we support this idea. So they made the scholarship come forward, and then Seth got it. So there's a couple of different ways that I've seen school boards use the resolution process. So anything that folks feel are issues that are not currently addressed or not addressed adequately in the resolutions that they would like our board to bring forward. And we have not put forward a resolution in recent history, so.
There's a lot in here.
There's so much.
I made a lot of notes, and I was wondering how we're going to be discussing all these.
Nope. Nope. There's so, so many.
So to think, you know, as our board, I can't think of more things to propose.
So the, and the ones that are the like continuing from 2021 nap section, those are the ones that were voted on last year. They have to be voted on like three times before they get put into the like full formal document. So we, the, when, at the delegate assembly, we revisit previous ones and then discuss new ones. So there's like, kind of like a cycle to it. I think it's really good for us to know. I will say, what some of the things that I have seen happen is, like for instance, a topic that I think is, you know, very front and center right now, and it was at the first delegate assembly that I attended, there were a couple of resolutions having to do with the School Board Association's lobbying positions about guns in schools. And the language that was in the resolutions was not clear. And so the School Board Association, at the time, the School Board Association's position was that they didn't take a position on it, because the delegate assembly had not given them clear language. And that was a very lengthy discussion about, like, that the, they really use what these resolutions say on their face to do their work. And so the School Board Association had refrained from engaging in conversation legislatively and lobbying on a couple of bills, that the delegate body was upset that the association had not taken a position, but there was no resolution to support them doing that. I don't have anything in particular, I, you know, will say for myself, there's nothing in particular that I think is a huge thing right now that is not addressed currently. Anything else? Okay, so then later in the fall, once the resolutions for this year come out, we'll look at those. And as a board, we take a, if we are sending a delegate to the assembly, then we take a vote as a board on if we would support that resolution or not. So that's kind of the next step of the School Board Association resolution process.
That's October.
So it is good, actually, that you did all those notes, because at some point you're gonna have to...
I just have to not lose the passion.
Exactly.
Okay, so our next agenda item, yeah, and they changed the date today, which has really messed me up. I think it's, is it in October or December now? October? I don't know.
I hope it's October, because December traveled.
I think it's October. I don't remember, I don't, it is October, because it was not snowing when I went. Okay, so our next agenda item is the principals report. So we have the principals report in our packet. Is there anything that you would like to highlight or add?
Yeah, I'll add, June 2nd, the Title I family game night was very well received. Lots of people were here. If you get the family newsletter, every Friday, last Friday, there were pictures of it. That went really well. June 3rd, we had our assembly for our new book, The Pet War. And this week, we'll have pictures from that. But Mrs. Hutchins dressed up like the cat, and Mr. Hayes dressed up like the dog, and they had a little bit of a duel, which was super fun. The kids loved it. It was our first assembly in person since I've been principal, inside the building. So that was really fun. The kids did great. We had a little bit of a review on how to behave in an assembly, and for the most part, everyone did great. Civil War Day just happened.
And the 5th graders are exhausted.
I bet they are exhausted. It was a beautiful day.
Yeah, it was perfect.
It was great. And then today was the 6th grader's first day at Nature's Classroom at Eastman. So that was, I got the word that they're exhausted, that it was super fun, and they're ready to go back tomorrow.
Good.
And then there's just more dates coming up that I added. But one I forgot to add was on June 14th, we're having a start of summer celebration here at Grantham Village School. And there will be games and music and food trucks. People can buy dinner. They can bring their own dinner. Just a really fun time for the whole community, whether it's Grantham Village School community or the Grantham community, to come out and just be with people. So that'd be really fun. And other than that, just what I have.
Can I ask you a question about the SAS testing?
Yes.
Was it the writing component that was not part of it this year, or was that a component?
I believe writing was part of it this year.
Did something, what, I don't know what I've read recently that made me think that they were not looking at that as an equal.
Oh, I believe that was all part of it.
That's good to know. Thanks.
And if I find I'm wrong, I'll let you know.
So it was math, science, and then writing?
The hardest part was that it just coincided with 50 kids being out.
Right.
Unbelievable.
It's bad timing.
So a huge kudos to Mrs. Widman and the people who proctored, because they worked really hard to get everybody in and were super flexible.
So good.
And the kids were super flexible, too.
They really were.
Any other questions or comments for Preston? Thank you. So busy.
So busy.
I will say, I think you'll appreciate this, or in the same way that as a parent I did. I have a friend who, her son's school, the last 26 days of the year, every single day was a theme day. And they coincided with a letter of the alphabet. And so every single day had a theme day to it for the end of the year.
That sounds pretty fun.
I was like, this is, oh my god. And their after-school program did it too, and they did not line them up. So there was like, wear purple day at school and dress like your twin day at after-school.
You're giving me so much anxiety right now. I can barely keep track of like the one a month that we do.
So the...
ABC secret pay last day.
The list of dates that you had, I was like, this is a very big, but manageable list of dates. Yes. Alright, and so our next agenda item is the superintendents report. Anything that you'd like to highlight or add to that for us?
I just have a couple of highlights and questions for the board. So I submit my report as written. However, in the area of report that we're submitting as written, does anybody want me to add anything in particular on there? Just, instead of having the area meeting, they asked for a written report. So I just gave a general update. Nothing in particular. Okay. We are, Mr. Compo and I are planning on meeting with the Grantham Energy Committee next Monday, the 13th. I know that the town select board met, and they are still all in with combining with the school. So do you all concur with our original plan of working with the town?
Yep.
Alright, we're still good with that. I would assume that that would be the case, but just wanted to check. And I attached what I've tried to make as simple as possible with legislation, and any questions on that?
Not any for you. Not any for you. That's well put.
I'm still really confused about the one, the federal versus state vaccine mandate, where the state of New Hampshire says they won't follow the federal guidelines, and I don't know how that one's going to work. But that one's actually going to the governor, so we'll see where that one goes. And then we do, the board doesn't usually accept these officially, but I know that you always want to know that we do have some support staff who will be leaving us. So unfortunately, we need to say goodbye to Jim Benoit, Josh Coda, Lori Hendricks, Michaela Marullo, and Pat Rockdeedle. And we wish them all well in their next endeavors, which are a wide variety of things that they're all doing. But you know, it's going to be, it's going to be some changes here at GBS. And then I know that Mrs. Reed has this great list of activities, and unfortunately, what I put for you is a reading list or a schedule. But I really did want you to get your mind and radar on the summer schedule for board work. So in July, the retreat, we're doing the G policies. In August, it's handbooks. We have GBS family, preschool, GBS staff, the non-CBA handbook, which is new, Para educator, which is new, and a substitute handbook. As always, for the ones that exist, we'll do them policy style with a cover sheet to make it more manageable. And then in September, we'll be doing our emergency operations plan and our safety plan. Just so that you have that on your radar. And that is it for me.
Any questions for Sydney?
Do you appreciate your legislative attachment? I mean, I do keep track of it, but thank you.
It's, you know, they try and do a color-coded one to keep track of like the bracket and everything, and even the colors are hard to keep track of. It's crazy.
I have so many thoughts, but thank you for helping us with that.
Yeah, I think some of the, you know, I tried to put the ones that will be significant for us. And there will be some that really affect us, and some we'll have to talk about during budget season. And one will possibly affect a vote maybe going into our trust with some unanticipated costs. But we'll cross those roads when we get to them.
When would that vote be? I'm sorry, didn't hear that.
For the trust?
Okay.
Yeah, we don't know. So we'll just have to see where the budget falls next year with a whole lot of factors. And then if we do wind up going significantly over in some of our special education costs, then the board, I would, I would bring to the board a request to go into the special education trust. We always try not to do that. We try to see if we can cover it with existing budget funds. But with new legislation, we may need to do it. But we'll see.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Sure.
Our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. So do we have any discussion or changes to the consent agenda? Okay, so we need a motion to accept the consent agenda. I have a motion from Denise and a second from Leslie, so we'll do a roll call. Denise? Leslie?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Brittany? Aye. Alright, and our next agenda item is we do have a non-public session tonight. So for anyone who is still joining us, we're not taking any votes when we come out of non-public.
Nope.
So tonight, when we come out of non-public, we will just be adjourning the meeting. And so we will not bring the, our...
Non-public vote.
What's the Zoom? What, yeah, we will not bring our, the Zoom will not be public again, because we're just going to be coming into our public meeting to adjourn. And so for anyone who's still joining us, our next meeting is the board retreat to do policy work on July 5th. So I know everyone's going to join us for that. And other than that, there's a lot of events happening to end the year, so thank you all. So we need a motion to enter non-public, and what are we entering under?
So there's two non-public concerns tonight. One is RSA 91A32I. And the other one is RSA 91A32A.
Alright, so we need a motion to enter non-public under RSA 91A32I and RSA 91A32A. Alright, I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Nancy, and this is a roll call. So Denise?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And Brittany? Aye. Alright, so we are entering non-public.